I greet everyone welcome to the Hutchinson City Council for Tuesday, August 26, 2025. We call the meeting order, approve the council agenda, any agenda additions or corrections?
May our council have any additions or questions for you?
Motion approved.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave, to approve the agenda as presented, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries implication, RC, First of All, current church, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me today. Let us pray. Almighty God, as you daily watch over us and promise to lead us, we ask that you would be with our city council, watch over the administration of our town, guide those who serve as leaders with the understanding necessary for their task, bless them with the wisdom and desire to serve our community faithfully, attend to their efforts, and permit them to experience the joys of noble service, bring forth effective leaders at every level for good government, and may your will be accomplished among us, bless our council to promote decisions today for the good of Hutchinson. I pray and ask all things in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Next, it's a pleasure, we'll need you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service in the city, city under down. Well, I was fortunate enough to get to throw off the first pitch for the Huskies game, and they actually had a walk-off win. And the week before, Matt got to throw one out, but they said my pitch was better.
Mine crossed the plate, it's all those kinds of things. It wasn't a strike, but they didn't.
No, I was a little high on outside, but he said it was pretty good. All right, we do have a resolution underneath there, we have resolution number 15900. The resolution accepting $25,000 donation from Citizens Bank and Trust Company for grandstand project at Veterans Memorial Field.
Motion approved.
Motion by Chad, Pat, second by Chad to approve that resolution, any other discussion?
I will now include the resolution, and we also had some additional funds from the Huskies that came in as a donation as well, just so you're aware of it.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Public comment, any citizen who wants to address the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, moving on. Approval of minutes, we have the regular meeting minutes of August 12, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve as presented, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of sanitary sewer for the landing project. B is approval of closing 200 block of Hassan Street on September 5, 2025, for customer appreciation event. C is approval of issuing temporary license of Hutchinson J.C.'s on September 12 and 13, 2025, at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. D is approval of issuing curry per net to Hutchinson High School Student Council on September 24, 2025, for the homecoming parade. E is approval of resolution number 15894, resolution adopting finding of facts and reasons for approval of final plat for the Wentworth with favorable planning commission recommendation. F is approval of resolution number 15895, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for a data center in a I-2 zone district located at 1025 Fifth Avenue Southeast with favorable planning commission recommendation. G is approval of resolution number 15896, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for the planning development in the short land district for an 81 unit apartment building in a C-3 zone district located at 126 Franklin Street Southwest with a favorable planning commission recommendation. H is resolution number 15898, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of lot split at 951 Gulf Course Road Southwest, favorable planning commission recommendation. I is approval of resolution number 15899, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of variance application to exceed the residential unit density allowable and to provide from minimum open space and design criteria for landing project with favorable planning commission recommendation. J is approval of resolution number 15897, resolution to dispose surplus property as IT equipment. K is approval of resolution number 15902, resolution adopting finding and facts, reason for approval of sketch plant, comprehensive plant that meant for the Park and Park Project located at 135 North High Drive Northeast with favorable planning commission recommendation. L is appointment of Steve Crowe to the Parks and Rec Community Education Board to August of 2028. M is the claim to appropriation and contract payments. Anything anybody wants to pull off the consent agenda?
Mayor, it asks that item 7A be pulled up.
I think the motion, do you want to accept the rest of the consent agenda? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat, to approve the consent agenda, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Yeah, because the ask to have us pulled off was that we included this agenda item in your packet, but we hadn't received bids yet, and so I think it's appropriate that the bids weren't, since the bids weren't in the packet, just to acknowledge that we had received the bids for this project. We received three bids, they're included on your desk tonight. The little bid for the project was from Derby Contracting in an amount of $108,704.50, and that the staff is asking that, they also consider approving that. That. That bid.
Motion approved.
Agreed. Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the bid from Derby Construction Contracting. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Let's go down to Born, Born Learning Trail.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Ari Zaski is here tonight, she's going to speak to this a little bit more, but she came to our Parks and Rec and Community Education Advisory Board here in August and presented an idea for one of our local parks, and it was recommended from our advisory board that she bring it forth to the city council. Included in your packet this evening, I included a little bit of information on the Born Learning Trail, and I'll let Ari kind of explain some of the other elements, and then give you some information.
Thanks, Lynn.
Well, the Born Learning Trail is something that was researched.
Can you tell us who you are?
Oh, sure. So, I'm Ari Zaski, just here as a community member. I have seen the Born Learning Trail in one of Southwest Initiative Foundation's newsletters, and they're kind of popping up all around the state and thought that it should be a good location for one. But it was research and made by United Way, and what it is, is a series of 10 different signs that are proposing to go up in a portion of the walking trail out at Rotary Park, and each sign has a different learning mechanism for early childhood education, and it is research-backed. But for example, one of them is like a painted caterpillar on the sidewalk, and there's different letters. And the sign encourages their caregivers to point to the letters, sound them out, make words, stuff like that. So it's encouraging kids to get outside, have fun while learning, encouraging their caregivers to get involved in their child's education. It is a lot of good stuff like that. It shapes, colors, letters, numbers, all the building blocks of learning that would take them into the school system. And Swift is willing to fund it, and Citizens Bank is willing to put it up. We just need city's approval for it to go there.
You look like a great. I looked at the presentation that you put forward, and it seems really positive to me.
I ran into one on a recent vacation up in Battle Lake, I thought that was cool. My kids loved it too. And I saw in the newsletter, one of the credit unions up in St. Cloud had partnered to put one up there. So any businesses that partner with it get their logos on the signs. So as far as upkeep, it's recommended to redo it every couple of years, but that's an opportunity for our local businesses to get in on it every couple of years. Other businesses could partner, and it's $1,500. But pretty small chunk of change for what comes with it.
Yeah, Larkport talked about it for quite a while, and I think it's a great project, so.
What are the logistics, I guess, behind Lynn or whoever about getting? I mean, what is the Southwest Swift need or Citizens Bank? Do they need what type of action do they need from the city? Because I'm wondering if that can be at the next meeting, whatever that is.
Right. I don't think they really need anything from us, just the approval. Again, it's pretty low cost to Swift and also to Citizens Bank. One of the things that Ari and I will talk about is just the ongoing maintenance, because it is every two to three years. So as we kind of implement this Born Learning Trail, that's one of the things that we will want to talk about, is just ongoing maintenance of it. And then I was going to approach the Rotary Club just to make sure they're very active in their park, make sure they're okay with it on both pieces, but I don't think there'll be any issues there. The trail's already there, so we're utilizing infrastructure that we currently have. And then it's just the signage and then the painting of the activity pieces. So if you feel there should be council directive on it, we can do that at the next meeting, otherwise more disinformative that.
Yeah, yes, we don't have action item on tonight, and so it's probably more or less just a simple proving the council.
Approving the request.
Yeah, prove the request at our next meeting, so.
I'm hoping about it.
I mean, I guess to assist Ari in counseling, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't sound like we guys have any concerns with it, we should just.
Well, Parks and Rec made the recommendation, correct?
Yeah, so she came to the advisory board, it was recommended just to bring it forth, since it'll be in addition to our park system, and thought it'd be a good thing to acknowledge that. And then also, we will have to probably purchase the items, since they'll be city things that we're putting in, and then Swift will have to make a donation to cover the cost, so that'll be the other thing eventually.
We can have that even in the action, I know, just to provoke them. If there's a dollar mod in that for the next meeting.
As long as the Parks and Rec.
Can just be a resolution next councilman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll take that on for the next one.
All right. Thank you much.
Thank you.
I have the next one too.
No.
Introduce the next person. So Josh Vandenberg is here, behalf of Hutchinson Junior League Baseball Association. Kind of similar, he approached the Parks and Rec Advisory Board with an idea to add to one of our parks, so I'll let him introduce himself and then give some information about it as well.
This is for the batting cage request. Yeah, my name's Josh Vandenberg, and like the previous one here, this is my first time doing this at the city as well, so bear with me. A little bit about the Hutchinson Junior League Baseball Association. Our numbers have been growing consistently, I think COVID put a little bit of a hammer on us for a few years. We've got very large numbers that we haven't seen, and probably, well, as long as I've been a part of the association, so that's in these five years, we're probably going back even to 10, 15 years that we're starting to see some good numbers with, which when we're competing against lacrosse and things like that, that's pretty good. So right now, our organization primarily supports nine through 14, we did add eight U this year. Some parents felt they wanted a little bit more of a competitive nature, so we are doing other stuff in the community besides, besides just what our charter says right now. We have about 100 to 125 players that use the fields at Northwoods Park. Right now, as of last year, actually this started about this time, we looked at adding a batting cage. We got in contact with, well, I got in contact with Lynn, and we had a couple conversations with the school, we just put in some softball cages, and so we were looking at pricing and things like that. So we kind of had a rough idea of what this is going to cost. The high school just put those batting cages in for about $20,000, I think it was two or three years ago. So we would be looking a little bit larger cage for batting cages, so we're planning on raising about $30,000. Now with that $30,000, that's going to depend on, or if we get more than that or less than that, depend on what we can actually do with the batting cage. There's obviously other things to look at too, when we look at continuing maintenance, we can spend more upfront, new concrete, you don't have to have all the dirt and everything that you got to take care of every year. So there's lots of things that we're trying to still figure out. But we will be looking to put this at Northwoods, like was earlier stated. We have a tentatively agreed upon location, it's not like it's set in stone yet. We came up with some different locations that we were looking at, none of those were really going to work. Parks Board came back, or not Parks Board, excuse me, Survey came back with a suggested location, which is going to be west of the South North Park Field, and it's kind of where the old ice rink is that hasn't been used in many years. So there's a little bit of work that would have to be done by the city. We're looking at probably some dirt moving, things like that. And then we've got a lot of local businesses right now offering cost or goods at cost to help with that. I've also got a, Steve and I work at 3M in the manufacturing plant there, in the, what's it called? Machine shop there, so I can actually build a lot of this ourselves, we're looking at saving a lot of money that way. Initial costs, when we look at pre-built and contractor installed, is a minimum of about $50,000. So we're looking at doing a lot of community involvement as far as fundraising, as far as labor costs and different contractors in town to help bring that down to that $30,000. And as of that right now, we do have about $21,000 raised. We have not done a big fundraiser push yet. We wanted to, at the advice of Parks and Rec and some other things, we were told to not focus on one thing yet, get some generic money coming in for field improvements, and one of those things we want to do with the field improvements is the batting cage there. Any questions?
So Lynn. I guess for both of you, is there a request for city financial contribution for stat time? I guess what.
So I think the contribution that we've been looking for for the city is just some of the labor, I believe, we've talked about, materials and things of that nature, we would supply unless the city is willing to do more, obviously, there'd be talks about that, but.
In our initial conversation, we had a really successful project with the school, where the park staff did do the install of it, which brought down the costs. We also worked with the school district to build some of it, and we just did that two years ago. And so that's kind of the model we were working with to help keep the costs down. But we wanted at this time, want them to fund all the things needed, and then we would help install, install it.
Is this at the spring of next year potentially, or is it whenever?
Whenever the funds are raised, we really start to plan for it. So their hope is for 2026, but it obviously is just dependent on their fundraising efforts.
Sure. So I think that's the direction or the guide that they're looking for from the council, is I guess first off, if they're just looking for income service. Yeah, I guess explosive, if it's okay for them to raise funds to build some of this, and if there's the direction you should be giving the staff, whether it's, you know, will we put up with our labor or no labor? Or, you know, will we contribute some of the money for that? And then that at least gives them the direction, that can be a future action item, whether it also is.
Are you having a problem providing labor, right?
As long as we know in advance that we can add it to our project list for the year, and so we know what we all have and is expected for that year, I think we can absolutely do it.
So that will be probably a next year project, and we have a time to have everything raised.
Right, if we don't have, if there's some planning stuff that doesn't have a, obviously, we would like to do it next year, but if you have to wait a year, I mean, we're not opposed to that, but obviously, we'd like to get it done.
Larkport discussed it at length and recommended moving forward with the project. That was one of the questions, the other, I know Parks and Rec has had employees or done work before on other projects in the community, so I'm strongly supportive of that.
I think it's just mindful of us, we've talked about this, even in our strategic planning session today is, we're stretched thin too, and so I think it's important for everybody when you need these projects added, which are great, but it is taking time away. And so sometimes we need patience from the community too, and being able to take on some of those projects.
And I think it's just the collaboration, and that they came to us early enough and are willing to work with our schedule, which is really good, and then also them knowing that as soon as the funds are raised, then we can plan for that too. So just that partnership is good.
I guess I have no problem with the feeling of the council.
I mean, it basically said no council actions, but if you're looking for, I guess the council to say, yeah, would Northwood Park be a great place for it? And we're tentatively good on staff helping with setting it up, I don't have a problem with that. That's what you're looking.
Yeah, like I said, it'd be similar just to the request that Ari had, was maybe a future action item for the council. I think it's.
I think once the funds are raised, it's more of an FY that they're raising them, and that this project is out there, and kind of similar to how the Huskies did their grandstand projects, to make sure you guys are aware of the project, and that funds are being raised for it.
Very, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Got a little more time to get around that. BMF grandstand project update, final call.
Yeah, Mayor, this is, this happens to be, I guess, perfect timing with the state term, but we wanted just to be transparent with the council and the public on the completion of that project, including your packet, just kind of a summary of the cost for that project, the month that the city kicked in, the month that came in from private sources. You may recall that our original cost estimate for this project was $650,000. The total cost ended up being $380,780. There was a couple change orders that came in, and then there was some additional work. The city's contribution of that was $400,000, which is what we had budgeted, the remaining. $280,780 was raised by private sources from a combination of the Huskies to Citizens Bank and others that were involved, so you're looking at, I think that's roughly 41%, 42% of that project cost came from non-city funds, and so. It's just more or less trying to be transparent with both the council and the public, and what that project cost is, it'd be the same thing with the police station when that was finished, and just want to do that with the council as well, as that project has come to an end in regards to the city's work on it.
Great. Any other questions for that one there? Discussion on the use of 429 revenue bonds to assist with the expansion of housing within the community.
Andy will help me on this if I need it. We're kind of seeking some direction from the council. We've been approached by a developer who was interested in some land, this is on the north side of town, we refer to it kind of as the Randy Anderson land, looking at a combination of apartments, single-family, duplexes, triplexes. We've been in conversation with them up until this point, they were exploring the use of housing TIF as a funding mechanism, and more recently, they have approached us about using 429 bonds to assist with the project costs. Now, I think a lot of us are familiar with 429, we talk about that from time to time, and that's what we do every year for our street projects. That's a combination of special assessments and city tax levy dollars that are being used to make those improvements. What they've asked us is a 420 revenue bond, which the revenue from the development is what helps pay for that bond, and so essentially, it's special assessments against the lots. And so in that case, there is no pledging of city tax dollars, but it does line up on our books as a, anybody call it a liability?
Liability.
As a liability. And so this isn't something we've talked about in the past as a funding source, it's not something that we, at least to my knowledge, ever used as a funding source from housing. There are some concerns in the fact that depending on the type of bonds that are used, is that it could impact what type of bonds we'd be able to issue. Have you talked about that $10 million threshold in regards to, was it tax exempt?
Right, tax exempt bank qualification.
Yeah, which provides lower interest rates for us when it comes to bonding. And so I think that's the question to the council now, why would they look to do it? It's less equity upfront for them. I think if, you know, to be fully transparent with everybody, you're probably looking at higher lock costs, because all the assessments for the road construction cost goes into that, into that financing. We'd still be responsible for, you know, having a public hearing, kind of using our normal 429 process that we use with the city, it's just, it's a collaboration that we would have to use with the developer. And so this isn't something we've talked about in the past, it's not a funding source. We've talked about as an option for housing, it's not something we've done. It's something that's been proposed, and so at the very least, we wanted to have a conversation with the city council to see, is this something you'd be willing to consider as a financing option for this type of housing development?
We talked about unique or different ways of getting housing started and going here. The only thing, the one part of that presentation you made or that you sent us was quite a bit of liability ends up on the city, as opposed to if they're doing financing themselves.
Andy, that's what I need to explain, you probably do it better than I can.
The way the developer is looking to structure this would be revenue bonds. By revenue bonds, we do that with Hutch Utilities, Waste Water, Water, where the revenue stream from Hutch Utilities pays all the debt, and the city isn't on a hook for any of it. The same would be with this proposal, the assessments paid by the property owners would be the sole source of funds to repay the debt. So if those properties don't sell, assessments aren't being paid, the debt may go into default, but that doesn't come back on us. Our only responsibility would be to collect the assessments from the county, pass those along to the trustee on the bond, the trustee then makes the debt service payments. If there's insufficient funds, it could go into default. But most likely with this, would be a really risky bond sale, for one. They would have to come up with sizable bond proceeds to place in an escrow, and that escrow then. And that escrow then could be used to cover a shortfall in the assessments. So there would be a lot of, I guess, looking at the developers' books very closely to make sure this could even work. At this point, my biggest concern would be loading up properties with assessments, and then they wanted TIF as well. Well, with TIF, you need that affordability component. And if all of a sudden you're loading it up with all these assessments, how does that make it affordable? So I have some concerns, but it's definitely an avenue that could be used.
We, I've shared with the developer, if you're looking to hold this route, we're not going to double up with TIF because we've got concerns on the ability to pay that obligation for the TIF. Now, they're looking at an apartment complex. We said you can still use TIF for the apartment, but anything that would be single-family, we're not going to basically double up on a, if you want to say, a public subsidiary or public assistance. And so I agree with Andy. I think it's a high cost that could be assessed on to those properties, and it's a high risk, but it's really on the development and developer.
So what are you looking for us?
Well, it's, it's a, do we have any interest in pursuing this type of financing with the developer?
Do we have any data on, track record on these? How many go into defaults or they?
Like I said, we've never done this in our community. This was a funding mechanism in the late 90s, early 2000s. Then you get a housing crash, and a lot of cities, I wouldn't say they went the revenue bond. A lot of them was just the 429, and a lot of cities were sitting there with developments that didn't have, that weren't even making payments, and they came back on the tax trail through forfeiture. So. I mean, to be blunt, it's nothing that anyone here at the city has any experience with.
And you mentioned that he would, the developer would have to, be willing to share their financials.
Right. This is a developer.
Deep dive in their financials.
Right. They haven't been very forthcoming with their information to this point. So they would really have to be a partner with the city in showing us all their costs and financing sources, their equity. Perhaps they're going to do that, but at this point, they haven't.
I won't make this come out as un-negative. It's just, you know, I think my idea of developers looking at that is a lot of monuments, a lot of.
Couple things to keep in mind.
Be cautious, man.
Yeah, a couple things to keep in mind. Like I said, and we can start this process, and if they don't provide the financials, that makes it quite easy for the city. But, you know, we're looking at some of the developments that are going on right now. You've got the Reiner Development, which they've asked for no public assistance. You've got the Landy Project, which we're doing a housing TIF for. And that's something we've been open on a front that we're very comfortable with doing. You've also got the concept plan that was approved by the Planning Commission, which would be the old Burns Banner site. What they told us right now is that they're not asking for any public assistance to do that project. And so it's not like we don't have any other development going on in town. But like I said, this is something that came to us. It's something that, as requested, we've just never done before. And it's going to be new for really everybody. And Andy's right, so far in our initial dealing with them, when we're looking at TIF, they have not been very forthright in the information that they've shared with the city. But this is an option that's available to them. And I guess if they don't provide that information, if we can do it, well, that makes it a lot easier answer for us to.
Providing what you're looking for, Andy, I would be comfortable to do it.
But can we get more information from the developer before we say yes or no?
Sure. I mean, yeah, at some point, there's going to have to be an agreement that comes in front of the city council to do it. I mean, I have no problem sharing with them that our council is interested, but we're concerned that you have a forthright with your finances when it comes to the TIF.
Yeah, if they're right up front with all their information, I wouldn't feel bad. But when people are dragging their teeth, it kind of makes me feel uncomfortable, you know? But it doesn't put us in a commission of no control. Are we still out of control or are we?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't reached anything yet. I mean, we get something out of, no, yeah, we're interested, but you better, you better, you know, be a lot more forthright with the information that you provided.
You'd be okay to get more information.
Sure. Like I said, it's not an action item, so we're just trying to gauge the council's interest in this.
Very.
It is a little bit past six, so we should.
We should have a public hearing, Confederation for Ordinance Number 25-857, approving revisions to the section of the Hutchinson City Charter as recommended by the Charter Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you noted, this is a public hearing to get some public input and for you to decide on some proposed changes to the Hutchinson City Charter that are being requested by the Charter Commission. And I guess I'll just break them into like two groups for easier explanation and hopefully easier. As being requested is dealing with the designated seat system that we currently have for our election of our city officials. And as you all know, when you recently filed for your city offices, you had to designate a seat for what you were running. It wasn't always that way. Some of you might recall that prior to 2002, it was just a general at-large system. There would be two council seats open. Everyone would be filing for election, and the top two vote getters would be awarded those seats. In 2002, there was a petition that was circulated with the city, and an election was held. And that at-large system was changed to a system where the seats were numbered one through four. And any candidate someone filed for candidate C for one of those seats, they had to choose which seat they were running for. The Charter Commission's met three or four times over the last year to discuss the pros and cons of that. Last meeting in March, they voted to put forth an ordinance to you as a body to eliminate that designated seat system and go back to the at-large voting system. As noted in your packet, part of that designated seat system led to the creation of city primary elections to be able to account for multiple candidates that might be filing for one designated seat. So as part of the ordinance before you, if you were to approve of it, would also be eliminating that primary election system for the council seats when people file for them. So that's the first, I guess I'll call it, chunk of charter changes that are being requested by the Charter Commission. Tiffany, but I heard the chairperson of the Charter Commission that's here tonight. If you have questions for her as far as the reasoning of the Charter Commission or background into the discussions as to why that request is being made, or if you have any questions of me right now regarding this portion of the request, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Could you speak to why there was a push in 2002 to change it?
So my memory serves in that when the group of petitioners came forth with that request was that they thought that having a pure at-large system amounted to, and I'm not going to get this quote correctly, but akin to a popularity contest, that just two individuals that might have the most name recognition in town would automatically be elected. And so the impetus between, the impetus to going to this designated seat system was that people would have to pick who they were running against, and therefore hopefully foster more competition.
So Mark, that went to a vote of the public and was approved by the public? Or was that done by the ordinance?
Yeah, no. So since that change was being proposed by a petition, the statute requires, once there was a sufficient number of signatures on that petition, that be brought to a citywide vote. And it was voted on, as I said, I recall, in 2002. And my memory serves me, there was about 4,500 votes cast, and those changes passed by about 200 or so votes. So if you had any discussion about that, or otherwise, you can just briefly explain these other changes that are also being requested by the Charter Commission, which really are more cut and dry. So the other changes being requested have to do with statutory changes that have been made to the election law pertaining to when a candidate has to file for election. Currently, currently, our charter says that candidate has to file, that period of candidacy can't be filed, candidate cannot submit their documents earlier than 60 days before the election nor later than 45 days before the election. And the statute now has been changed from 60 days to 98 days and 84 days rather than 45 days. So that's mandated by statute. The Charter Commission felt it was important to be consistent with the state statute, and so that's why that change is being recommended. The other slight change that's being recommended has to do with a notice that the city administrator has to give when the sample ballot can be viewed at the auditor's office. You may recall back in the old days, you could draw a copy of the Hutchinson Leader, and the complete ballot would be published in the paper. That's no longer the case. It's just posted at the auditor's office, but the city has to give a notice when that sample ballot is available for viewing. Again, this is a very minor change. The timeframe has gone from one week notice to a two-week notice that the city administrator has to give. And so again, to be consistent with state law, the change proposed in the charter is to change, I think, from one week to two weeks on that. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. Ms. Menards here as well. Or certainly if members of the public have questions or concerns about the changes that are being proposed, this would be a great time for you to entertain those questions.
Any questions from the council? Open, open for public comment?
If you're interested in addressing the city council regarding this proposed charter change, I'd ask that you come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tiffany Menard. I live at 108 Grove Street Southwest here in Hutchinson. I am the acting chair of our Charter Commission, and I thought I'd just offer a little context, maybe a little editorial as well. So this actually was an issue that I think we've brought up on the Charter Commission year after year, and it doesn't usually go anywhere. This past year, however, I actually fielded some phone calls about this issue, which is why we took it a little bit more seriously to bring forth change, or bring change forward for you to consider. And we really felt like the council was a more public forum to have that discussion since the Charter Commission meetings are usually not attended by the public. Anyway, so I guess some of the considerations we were thinking of when changing this back to an at-large system, I think Matt Yonick could attest that over the last 25 years, people filing for public service candidacies on the decline. And we really felt like that maybe an at-large system would feel less adversarial and hopefully bring more people to the table who want to serve as leaders, such as yourself. We also felt since the seats weren't designated to a location or precinct in our community, that they were sort of, we, well, I'll just say we didn't find any other municipalities that have the same model as us. Is that correct?
Right. And I think what Tiffany's alluding to is there are communities, I'll just use Glencoe as an example, that have their cities divided into wards, and their council people are assigned to represent the people in their ward. They have to be residents of that ward. We don't have that in Hutchinson. We don't have wards. But yet we have this designated seat system. And as Tiffany alluded to, we weren't able to find any other communities that have the same system we do. Not that that's right or wrong, it's just we're unique.
It's interesting. I talked to the city administrator earlier, because when I was reading through this, and I actually was on a city council same size as Hutchinson, that handy ward system, and really appreciated that it did have a ward system because you had people in that area, in that neighborhood, that you could go out and not have to spread out over the whole city. You could go ask your neighbors and people down the block and not have to, because, believe it or not, there are different.
Constituencies.
A park here versus a park there, or a tax rate here versus a tax rate here are a lot different in the community. So just, as we're exploring.
Right. That wasn't part of our discussion, but it certainly could be up to you. I think really the goal for us was to bring it forward to more public forum, understanding that in 2002, this was voted on by the people. So we wanted to make sure that the conversation was public.
You don't thought it, Doug, but like you mentioned, there's definitely less people. I'm surprised, as a lifelong resident, that there isn't more people. And I wasn't going to run. And with one day to go, nobody had to file. Now, for a sphere of me running, they could have just checked, and I'm not saying that that way. I don't mean to come across like I think I couldn't be. I don't mean that at all. But the apathy, I don't know that you change that with what you're proposing, because why wouldn't someone come forward? I made it clear that I wasn't going to run. And the reason I did, because I wasn't going to leave a seal. And that, I was really disappointed that the citizens of Hutch, if they have that feeling that the people that are there can't be beaten, well, then that's lack of energy on their part and lack of even getting involved. I'm not angry in any way. I just, I was truly disappointed. Tiffany, I talked to you. I wasn't going to run, but when no one filed, it was like, are you kidding me? 15,000 people, and someone doesn't have the, I can't use the term I like to use, but doesn't have the wherewithal to, yeah, guts, I'm going to use that, but guts to fight for it. You know, do you think you're above running for this position?
Or they don't want to choose you to run against or to.
But I, that's my, that's 100% my point. I had no intention until 15,000 people thought, even one, they didn't care. Two, they thought they're doing a great job. I doubt that, because I've heard from constituents that we're not doing a good job. You know, this system we've got is poor because we get the same people and they can't. And I'm a little bit frustrated with that. You know, I get to hear a lot of things, and, you know, you guys should resign. Well, then step up. And if you think you're above that, then. A little bit of anger coming out, because I mean, and I'm not saying opposed to this type of, you know, call it what you want, you know, the system. I just, I was, it was disappointing to find out. And the apathy's been there for a while, like you said.
I think what I saw from younger people, that had younger people saying, hey, I should, what does it take to be on the council? And most of it's the fear of, listen, we're just going over a completely different bond. We've never heard of before. You know, our, haven't partaken in it. It's like, I don't have that base knowledge. And like I've told them, it's just a learning curve. We have great staff who help you through that learning curve. You can ask questions, and yeah, I ask stupid questions all the time, but they're not dumb. They're to the point of, we need those answers to be able to make the correct decision. Go back to the chickens. I talked to more people about chickens than I've ever wanted to talk to in my life. But it's the fear of the general knowledge of, am I, do I have financial background to be able to do a budget? Do I have a strategic planning background to do this? No, it's, it's just you want to be a community leader. And so I see that's where the apathy comes from, is the fear of doing it.
And squeezing on social media to call all the things and you're not, you know.
Well, that's the other part too, but.
Yeah, I applaud the recognition. It's just, I hope it can change the things that you want to change.
If I was going to recommend anything on this, if it went to a vote before, I would say, if you want to, take it to a vote again. But I, that's the game, the game, that's more.
One other thing to consider is removing the primary, right? So if we do have low candidacy rates, we are spending money on a primary that we don't need and extending the filing period for maybe a longer period than we need. So that was just another consideration. So that was just another consideration.
Well, there's no, we're going to have a primary no matter what because we're going to have to do it for the state and other ones too. So there may, there's, there's a little bit of cost savings because we're, but I would say it's not going to be a symmetry one, so.
Any else for Tiffany?
The first year I ran in Hawaii, I want to say there was like eleven or twelve people between two seats that we had a big primary. We had a big forum at the event center and stuff, and it was pretty wild, but ever since then, it's been like two or three people per seat.
I think we maybe had four or five.
A couple of times, I guess, a little.
Eighteen maybe.
It's shocking that there are more of it. It's sad. I, I made it clear that I'd like to see someone younger. Not a lot of females on this. Where are you guys? Come home and run, you know what? Yeah, and maybe this changes it.
Maybe. Just public consideration, please.
Any else for Tiffany?
Thank you.
Anybody else? You're taking motion to vote public hearing?
So, second.
I have a second, I have a vote public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anything?
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject some things here while you're going to be considering this. So I sent over to the board action forum, as Tiffany talked about. So another request before you is to approve these changes by this ordinance. I don't exactly where the council's going to go. If the council decides it's going to deny approval, deny the ordinance. The Charter Commission has the power under the statute to schedule its own election in the future. Tim had indicated maybe he was worried people would be denied. You know, if that's the case, if you want, if that's the way that you want to go, that is a method to do it. If you approve this ordinance, a number of the community can circulate a petition. And if you get the requisite number of signatures, force a vote on this ordinance anyway.
Is it a percentage of the last election?
It is. I want to say it's ten percent.
That's what I've seen.
It's ten percent of people that voted in the last city election, as I recall. And listen, I had talked about that. I think we had about nine, was it nine thousand now?
One thousand and ten.
Could be one thousand and ten people on a petition to force this ordinance to a, to a vote if you decided you were going to pass it.
Does it take two readings of the ordinance or is it just?
No, but it would be two, just like any other ordinance. Another thing to really muddy the waters is, you know, this designated seat system question that you're going to be considering as part of the ordinance is one thing. These other things with these filing deadlines and this notice from the city administrator, those are required by the statute. So in my mind, they have to be approved. You know, so I suppose you could, again, if you think you're going to deny this ordinance, just deny it. Then we can bring back those statutory ones at a later date where you could consider. But as Tiffany mentioned, and I guess I'd reiterate, the Charter Commission is asking that you approve the ordinance. But obviously, it's up to you.
And obviously, as with any other ordinance, it would be a first reading of the ordinance. A second reading would be scheduled for the next meeting.
So are we allowing to ask that they be separated before we pursue this?
Yeah, we talked about that. I think the best course of action is if you're going to just deny it, just deny it all. And then we would just bring it back separately for the statutory stuff later on. Just because, just because the hearing was noted as them all being together.
Any other? You're taking a motion?
I make motion to deny.
Oh, second.
Motion by Dave, second by Tim to deny. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries.
So is that also with the understanding then that at a future meeting in the near future, we bring back these statutory changes?
Yes.
Thank you.
I read, found a new business, first reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-five-eight. An ordinance for the sale of municipal own property to Hutchinson. The landing LLC.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have just a very short presentation tonight. Mostly because a whole bunch of stuff will be landing in two weeks and that's when the real major decisions will come about. So the topic is consideration of an ordinance to sell city-owned land. This is on a block that's just west of Main Street, just west of Cornstone Commons. There's a city block there that the city and the EDA have pulled together here over the years. And the proposal is that we would sell about three quarters of it, basically the east end of the block. And then on the west side, there's two lots on the south end. So basically, kind of the area of the building footprint and the parking lot is what would be for sale, that we would sell. The project is an eighty-one unit market rated apartment project. G C Real Estate from St. Cloud is the developer on this. And this would be a nice four-story building, ground level parking, three levels of apartments above it. Have some pretty nice amenities. There'll be a rooftop patio. There's an outdoor patio with a fire pit. Underground parking and then also outside parking. There's a dog park that's going to get put in as part of this. It's going to be a very nice development. So the very, well, we've had many first steps. Tonight, I think, would be just to consider the first reading of the ordinance and then we would come back next week with a much fuller report, second reading of an ordinance. Then next week, we'll have development agreement, purchase agreement, public hearing for the district that's being proposed to help make this happen. So next week is really when the, or I mean, next meeting, I should say September ninth is when the action will, will really commence. I think that's all I'm going to say. Any questions?
Miles, maybe just note that there was a process that was gone through to select this development.
Yeah, good point. The redevelopment of this site, it's been a long and winding road. And this past year, I'd say about a year ago now, basically, we had put out a request for proposals and invited developers to submit ideas for redeveloping this property. So we went through a process and then through that process, G C Real Estate from St. Cloud was selected as what we thought was the best fit. And that's kind of what leads us to today. So I think that's all I'm going to say. Any questions about anything?
Motion to approve ordinance two-five-eight-five-eight. Sorry. Motion by Dave, second by Chad to approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-five-nine. An ordinance of the city of Hutchinson vacating the alley on block forty-one north at Hutchinson.
Sure. Evening, Mayor, council members. This project is the same one Miles just referred to, as well as the one that you approved several items for on the consent agenda earlier this evening. So on that former medical center site block, there's an alley in there that has some utilities in it, including a fiber duct thing that Vera has and some small utilities that we have taken out once the home to rebuild. But in order to rebuild this parcel, the city's requesting that that alley be vacated. People no longer be needed. And then that would allow the construction of this project over the top of it. So staff is recommending vacation of that alley right away as an order in the report. And this would be the first reading of the ordinance.
Any motion to approve?
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve that ordinance. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight-six-zero. An ordinance of the city of Hutchinson vacating the right-of-way at the sanitary sewer. He's been located at one twenty-six Franklin Street Northwest.
Yes, similar to that. I want, there's an old sewer line that runs through really the middle of that block. Kind of the middle technically, but through a portion where you wouldn't expect it. And earlier this evening, we approved a bid for some sewer alignment. That would be the alignment of this sewer. And staff is once again recommending that, that right-of-way easement. I think it's from nineteen thirty-one. That includes that sanitary sewer be vacated to allow for construction of this project.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution number one-five-nine-zero-one. A resolution for the sale of general obligation improvement bonds series twenty, twenty-five-eight.
Need a younger kid here to show you.
Slide, slideshow ready?
There you go. Thanks, man. So we do this every year where we issue bonds to finance a good portion of our roadway projects. We do so pretty much after the fact as the projects are winding down, just because it allows us to have actual costs, actual big costs to go out for bonding rather than bonding on estimated costs. So it provides us with a little more accurate debt service on the projects. So for this year, I just wanted to show you the projects that we're actually bonding. We have the Dale Street and the Hassan Street projects. So basically two projects and then a little contingency. Total cost just over four point two million dollars. And then on the funding side, I always like to show the funding just so you guys see that it's not just debt we're issuing. But this year, with Dale Street being a municipal state aid street, we were able to use a substantial amount of our state aid dollars. So you can see there in that first funding column, one point four six million dollars of state monies were used towards that project. So thirty-five percent of our total cost covered by state aid. Another nine percent of our cost covered by enterprise funds, water, the sewer and stormwater. And then fifteen percent covered by assessments to property owners, but even about forty-one percent covered by our debt or the bond, bond offering that we're looking for your approval tonight. Down in that lower right box, just wanted to show you this, just so you can see how this matches up with our debt management plan. As we discussed in, in the previous workshop, we have a target, annual target debt level of one point nine million. That's in the red. You can see there. Total city debt with this offering that we're showing you tonight is about fifty-eight thousand below that. So we're right in line with our debt management plan. And then I guess I forgot to preface this. Nick Anott's usually here to present this. He had a conflict, so you're stuck with me tonight. So I'm going to give a brief summary, trying to follow in what he usually presents. But this is just a summary of the pre-sale report that was in, in the packet. We're looking at issuing par value two million, four hundred and five thousand dollars of tax exempt general obligation improvement bonds. And the authority for issuing these bonds is within that statute four twenty-nine that we were talking about with that prior agenda item. And we can avoid a referendum as long as the special assessment levels meet the requirements of statute four twenty-nine, which in the case this year, we do meet that requirement. Other years, we've had to utilize statute four seventy-five. And it's a little different process, but in the end, it's the same issue of general obligation bonds. The big trigger here is the debt is backed by the city's pledge of credit and taxing powers. So that, our, the buyers of our bonds essentially look at that and see less risk as they know we'll just raise taxes in order to pay back the, pay back the debt service on the bonds if assessments fall short. And then determine the bonds consistent with all our other bonding in our debt management plan, fifteen years. And then the repayment would be from special assessments collected over a ten-year term. And then the city's debt tax levy over a fifteen-year term. Interest rate, elders is conservatively estimating the rate at just a little over four percent. Nick believes that'll come in lower, that we have about a month between now and the sale, so a lot can happen. The feds may reduce rates. We don't know. If they do, it might affect slightly on the front end of our bonds, probably not so much on the back end of our bonds. City's bond rating is currently at double A minus, which is the fourth highest rating for a municipality. And elders and myself will be meeting with S and P here in a couple of weeks and fully expect to be reaffirmed at that double A minus. S and P looks at this as a, as a staple outlook over the past several years, so that, that's a positive. And what they really like is our fund balances and our financial policies. So when we bring you the five-year capital plan, like we just discussed at the workshop earlier, they like those plans. They like the five-year financial plan. They like our, our debt management plan. All those come into play and, and get looked at by the bond rating agency as they determine our credit rating. So tonight's really the kickoff of the process. Based on your approval tonight, elders and I will start working to compile the information that gets sent out to the prospective bond buyers. And then September tenth, as I mentioned, we'll meet with S and P and then they'll do their analysis on, on the city of Hutchinson. September twelfth, we'll distribute the official statement for bids. And then we'll come back at the September twenty-third council meeting to award the sale of bonds based on the bids received. And then we'll receive our bond proceeds on around October sixteen. The debt management plan that we look at each year, it's a very fluid plan. A lot can affect, mainly interest rates can affect those out years. We've had assumptions in the last few years, higher interest rates. Now, as those have been coming down, I've backed off a little bit on the interest rates. So the first, first two years here are actual levy amounts. And for twenty twenty-six, I guess I'll just flip to here. For twenty twenty-six, based on what Nick has presented in his pre-sale report, we'd be looking at a debt levy of two million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-six roughly. So that's about a three point nine percent increase over the twenty twenty-five debt levy. Last December, when we brought the debt plan to you for review, we're looking at over two point seven million dollar debt levy for twenty twenty-six. So that was about a six point eight percent increase. And some things have changed since then. One of the biggest is with that development site that Miles was just presenting on. We originally planned to bond for some of those improvement costs. And our estimate was upwards of five or six hundred thousand, I believe. So that was included in last year's debt plan. Now the costs have come down substantially and we believe we can fund those costs with wastewater and stormwater reserves as opposed to taking out debt. So that's all I have for you tonight, unless you guys have any comments or questions. If not, I would ask that you approve this resolution.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave, to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post any? Carries. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
All right. We have the Hutchinson, city of Hutchinson financial report and investment reports for July of two thousand twenty-five. Mike, do you have any for us tonight?
I'll mention a real quick paving update. We're just finishing Dale, second what's going on tonight. They expect to finish tomorrow night, Thursday at the latest. Striping before the weekend, signs hold by the weekend and open next week. There will be a little bit of work, it looks like, at this point into next week, but it should affect traffic. So, I just wanted to note that.
Down to the wire. Down to the wire. Thanks. Brandon, do you have any for us? Chief, get person. Nothing today. Dan?
Nothing new.
Kelly? Mark, you have any for us?
Anything else tonight?
Matt?
Just a reminder, Monday is Labor Day, so most of the offices are closed on Monday.
All righty. Chad, let's start with you.
I don't have any extra, David.
All righty. Tim?
I have anything, so nothing.
Dave?
M M M D C. There are T T C. We've got a committee with that today by Zoom. Nothing there to report that, except for, now I'm going to forget it. This is sure as I'm sitting here. Parents, inspirational parents, parents of inspiration. There are no entities in town.
Parents inspired.
There you go. You got it right. And they're working on a volunteer driver program somewhere in the twenty-five mile radius. They're working that out very diligently. And they're looking for another van that would give them more opportunity for that at this volunteer driver program. So, I think they have a list of names that they're working on to see if they are available for that volunteer driver program. And if you are available and can drive, I would certainly go talk to them. And then you'll help the candidate be a good asset to Hutchinson. And so, yeah, that's about the extent of that.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Pat?
Not much school starts to do, there's a lot of children, police, buses, parents. Everybody have a good library.
All righty. We have a resource allocation meeting. Kind of had a couple of updates from everybody. Got an H R A meeting where there's twenty-two listings in Hutchinson for homes. We have twenty-five sales closed, so their inventory, there's thirty-two offices right now for sale in Hutchinson. And, you know, we do take care of parked towers, too. So, there are vacancies in parked towers if you're looking for a place to reside. With that, we're going to move into a close session. So, the purpose of this close session is to conduct the close session under Minnesota statute thirteen, the point five subdivision three C, to develop or consider a offer for purchase of all the Rito State property. The north hundred-and-twenty acres of southeast quarter of section four township, one-sixteenth range thirty. The south forty acres of southeast quarter of section four township, one-sixteenth range thirty. And part of the northwest quarter of northeast quarter and the part of northeast quarters of the northwest quarter of section nine township, one-sixteenth range thirty, consisting of thirteen point five-nine acres. Now, I would enter the motion to go into the close session to discuss a possible purchase of a parcel of the real estate that I've just described.
So.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Pat, to move into the close session. Possible purchase of real estate property, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post any? All righty.